I call the 3:00 PM session of the September 24th, 2024 meeting of the Henry County Board of Supervisors to order. I'd like to welcome all of our visitors. Remind you, if you want to address the board, you must sign up seven days in advance of any of our regular meetings to be put on the agenda. The county administrator is the contact person for the board. However, the public may address the board under the Agenda item, matters presented by the public later in the meeting that will be Agenda Item 15 that we will take up in this evening's session. Again, welcome everyone. Thank you for coming out and participating in your county government. Our first business item of consideration today is items of consent. What is the pleasure of the board in regard to the items of consent?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the items of consent.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? It is six, zero, Jennifer. Agenda item number six, monthly report on delinquent tax collection efforts. We have with us County Treasurer Scott Grinstaff. Scott, welcome.
Good afternoon. This is a report for the month ending August 30th. Personal property collection, we collected 90.89% of the 23 personal property taxes. During the month, we collected $93,736. Real estate as of August 30th, we collected 94.72% of the 23 real estate taxes during the month, we collected $64,787. Since January 1st, 2024, TACS has collected $667,507. And in debt set off, we received another $4,500 on September 16th. So the total for 2024 is $392,240 through the debt set off program. So far in the month of September, we've had five DMV stops collected. And hopefully, all you know that the real estate bills were mailed since the last meeting. Hopefully, all of you have paid for it by now. But at the last meeting, I also mentioned something about the personal property due date. After speaking with Mr. Wagner and confirming with Mr. Lyle, that it's a bit more complicated. We probably have to have a public hearing to change the dates and the code and everything. So I don't have anything for you this meeting, but it will be on the horizon for y'all.
Does anyone have any items for Mr. Grinstaff at this time? Scott, thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number seven, a consideration of a resolution establishing Kiwi Emergency Medical Services LLC as an EMS agency in Henry County. Mr. Wagner, will you give us some background on this, please?
Andrew Bowles, Chief Executive Officer of Kiwi Emergency Medical Services LLC, seeking the board's approval to establish an EMS transport business in Henry County. Dakota, Virginia grants the local governing body the authority to approve by resolution the creation of any new EMS agencies formed after July 1st, 1984. Mr. Bowles indicates that Kiwi Emergency Medical Services intends to operate in 4259 Appalachian Drive in Fieldale, which may recall is a former Carter Bank building. And his company will provide non-emergency transport for doctors' appointments and discharge from facilities as well as inter-facility transport services. Kiwi Emergency Medical Services will not be a dispatcher now in one center, or will they be eligible to respond to emergency calls. Staff has carefully reviewed this request and has no objections, but we do recommend that your approval be contingent upon the company meeting all zoning requirements and obtaining a Henry County business license. And Mr. Bowles is here to give you a few questions of his company. And a full business plan was included in your package.
As part of the board's package that you've had an opportunity to review, and I think it's close to 15 pages of background material provided by the company, what is the desire of the board in regard to this consideration of a resolution?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions for Mr. Bowles, if he could come over.
Yes, sir.
How you doing? We spoke briefly. Just if you could go over your sort of acceptance of how you plan to take trips and then your billing procedures once you've handled the call.
So we have a dispatch office based in Buena Vista. We have currently two locations now. This will be our third location. During normal business hours and up till 11 o'clock at night, it'll go through there. After 11 o'clock at night, as we develop, we'll have a crew overnight and they will have a dispatch phone for them. The key reason for me not having an office 24/7 is to keep the overheads down. It's a business that, as I'm sure a number of you are aware from your EMS background, billing is an interesting challenge. So keeping overheads correct is a challenge for us. And we've got a really good business model that's working out in two locations. When you talk about billing, we have a billing company, LifeQuest out of the Midwest, which is part of ASMC. They handle all of our insurance billing. And then we have contracts direct with Medicaid brokers, both access to care and mode of care, and bill direct to those. Yeah, any other questions?
Is it a soft bill process or?
So it's an interesting thing when you look at soft billing versus hard billing. In reality, anyone who says they hard bill, you get about 10% of that money. So we don't go out aggressively after any of that. We don't do a lot of private pay. One of the things that we're talking with Martin's Hospital is that anything where the insurance company declines, the hospital will pay. Because as I said, reality is you get about 10% if you bill a patient. So you're better off having other means and certainly the work we do in other locations, we minimize anything we're charging a patient.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Well, I do have a follow-up. Thank you, Mr. Proudie, for asking those questions. And I think that it would be every citizen of the areas concerned, just the six members of the board, as in regard to billing, as to the aggressiveness of collection. Nothing can be worse than have people fearing for what they've committed themselves to in an expense and then have that fear that they're going to sue me, they're going to come take my property, all the things that they may try to do.
That is not our method. We soft bill effectively because where there is a transport company not too distant from here that does that, they're a large company, we are not. Because the amount of effort you have to put into doing that, to the return, it isn't worth it from a business point of view. And also, I'm like everyone, I'm a taxpayer in the county I live in. I don't want to be feared with that. We're a family business. My wife and I own the business. We're not a large corporation and we have the morals. I volunteer with our local fire department at home, and it's about giving back to the people this business is set up to help in the void where there isn't a lot of resources out there. And that's where we focused on the areas where we have rather than going out competing against that.
Well, and as with any business, we would expect the business to operate, if they're going to stay in business, financially profitable. And I guess the biggest thing is the clarity of engaging a customer or a client so that they have an understanding, this is what it's going to cost.
So we have a policy. If anything, we have an operation in Charlottesville. We are the main discharge company for UVA Hospital in Charlottesville. If there is going to be any bill to the patient, because we think, we've learned as we've been going, what insurances will and won't pay. If we know the insurance is not going to pay, then we're upfront. Here is the potential cost, and everyone is advised and agreed upfront. They have the opportunity to say yes or no at that time. We're not in any way going out after the fact because you're not going to get the money. It's not in the public interest. And we, we've learned a lot in two years, two and a half years we've been in business.
Correct. Thank you. In regard to the resolution establishing Kiwi Emergency Medical Services, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the resolution as presented, establishing Kiwi Emergency Medical Services LLC as an EMS agency in Henry County, contingent upon the applicant meeting all zoning requirements and obtaining a business license in Henry County.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six, zero. Jennifer, thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number eight, we'll have an update on the progress of broadband installation in Henry County. Mr. Wagner?
We have with us today Mr. Robert Taylor, Director of Government Affairs with River Street Networks. And Mrs. Amanda Cox, external affairs manager with Appalachian Power, are here today to give us an update on the fiber-to-the-home broadband project.
Afternoon. I'm Robert Taylor with River Street Networks. I'd like to bring you up to speed on where we stand with the broadband build in Henry County. Again, a quick overview, our broadband plan is to pass over 34 locations. The total project cost is about $34 million, just over $34 million. River Street is bringing in $4.4 million. AEP is bringing in an additional $12.8 million in construction and matching funds. The county is supplying just over $4 million in ARPA funding, and the state of Virginia has supplied us $13 million in VATTI funds. Again, this is to provide fiber-to-the-home internet services past 3,461 locations. Our current build is ongoing in the Fieldale Spencer route. Here's an overview of what that route looks like and where it's covering. Here's an update. AEP has started construction. They've already completed 18,000 feet of aerial fiber and have received a railroad crossing agreement. River Street has provided them the splicing for poles and the KMZ files, and we still need to provide them the splicing designs. In the Axon area, AEP is working on construction prints and submitting VDOT permits as needed. RSN has provided them the KMZ files and the AEP design, and they are also still, AEP is waiting for us to provide them the splicing designs there as well. In the Leatherwood community, we have provided the KMZ files, and we're not far enough along on that yet to get the splicing designs together. Once the AEP POP, or that's the presence, point of presence, is online, that remote is online, in the Q2 of next year, we'll be able to start lighting our first customers, and more than likely that will be in the Fieldale Spencer area. One of the things that I'm here to ask today is that the NTIA has approved Virginia's Volume 2 BEAT funding application, and we're just waiting them to approve the BEAT fundable map locations. Once that is done, the state will open up a seven-day process in which they'll allow ISPs to see those mapping points for us to start looking at counties that we want to partner with and putting together a BEAT application. We're hoping that all of our existing partners would work with us by supplying us a BEAT support letter. This letter does not prohibit any other ISPs from building the same locations or going after funding at the same locations that we are. It doesn't commit the county to any matching funds. It just says that you'll support us in supplying broadband services to any locations that we're fortunate enough to receive BEAT funding in future. Right now, the BEAT application window, once it does open, there's a 60-day letter of intent window that the ISPs have to go through. During that time, we'll put together letters of intent in which jurisdictions will be wanting to build fiber locations out to. After that, there's a 90-day application window in which we have to submit all the applications to the state. The applications this time around will be done by jurisdictions, so by independent cities or by counties. They won't be done by regional applications. Currently, we're working with county staff to look at some potential remote building sites that we need to continue the build on the AEP fiber as well as to extend for possible BEAT expansion in the future. What I'd like to do, any questions on the fiber update before I proceed? If not, we'll come back to it later. What I'd like to do is talk about some of our marketing efforts. So as the build progresses, we'll take part in any type of festivals that you have. So here's an example of Mea Day Festival, this is out in Mea County. But any events that you might have, if you can make sure I'm aware of those, our marketing team will want to take part in that to build brand awareness. We'll also do different advertising, typically brand awareness. We'll do any sort of local marketing when it comes to newspapers, radio ads, as well as any billboards that might be in the area that we could possibly get our name on. Once we do brand awareness, we start doing, as the fiber build progresses, we'll start doing direct mailings. We find that postcards work best, and we send something out in an envelope. A lot of times, it gets torn up and thrown away. So we'll typically do a fibers coming postcard. Then we'll do later a fibers here, and then we'll do like registration. And just like anything, we know we need to get out there multiple times in front of the customers, our potential customers, before they even reach out to us. So again, here's what fibers here looks like. We also have promotional postcards we'll send out once build is completed to let people know of any signup discounts that we might have or specials we have going on at the time. This is an example of an actual billboard that I see in Pennsylvania County as I'm leaving Pennsylvania County going into Halifax County. In addition to this, I want to bring everyone's attention, Henry County is now loaded up on our website. So if you go to myriverstreet.net, you go down to the middle where it says Fiber Build, and you select Fiber Build Updates, it will take you to the next page which shows the counties. You go to Counties in Virginia, go down to Henry County, and click on that, and it will bring up this map. This map is searchable, so people can go put their address in and find out if they're one of the blue dots in which we're planning on passing the fiber. Or if they want to, they can try to zoom in and locate the map, the point manually. I encourage people that if they're interested in the service, once they go here, they can go on and click the dot, and they can just register that they're interested. That doesn't commit them to anything, but what happens is it puts them on our map so that we know to send them the mailings. And we also know that the CSRs know that when service is getting close, we can preregister them. Or when service is there, we'll reach out to them, go on and sign them up, or see if they're interested in selling their services. So again, this is on our webpage. People can go out, start searching on it, if you want to start registering that they're interested, and let us know that once service is available, they want to be contacted so we can sign them up for services. If you don't have any questions for me, you want to turn it over to Amanda, but I thought I'd pause here to see if there's any questions.
So anyone have any questions at this time? Thank you so much for the update.
All right, I'll just step to the side. Amanda, you have a question?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Amanda Cox with Appalachian Power. It's so good to see y'all's faces. Excited to give some updates on our rural broadband project. Ross given you a little bit of information, kind of wanted to touch on Appalachian Power's role. So we are the middle mile partner in this project, and that basically means we're building out the middle mile from pole to pole in areas of our service territory with rough terrain and in some cases sparse population. We do have to gain Virginia SCC approval for this project. We are a regulated utility. That added an additional six months to the timeline, and we've actually upped our investment a little bit. We expect to spend $18.3 million specific to Henry County. So that's all of our equipment, electronics fully loaded, around $18.3 million. How it works, we build in the power zone. So we're about a foot below the neutral. We own and operate the asset. We install a drop. With the risk of getting too technical, we install a drop so that River Street can go in and connect the customer. A lot of times, we're building right up to the transformer in front of some of your citizens' homes. This avoids traditional make-ready work that is involved with most telecommunications projects. So underneath the power lines, you know, there's a lot of communications lines that run under there. It avoids that attachment and a lot of that work that has to be done on the front end. We lease the dark fiber and hand the internet, we hand that off to the internet service provider, River Street, and they serve the customer. And the benefits are clear. It allows for a future-proof solution for connectivity, and we're also enhancing the electric grid. So this fiber, based on legislation, has to have a dual use. So for us, we are enhancing the grid, providing reliability, but also connecting your citizens to that 21st century economy. I'm not going to go through all of these items, but I did want you to see the process and all of these steps and things that we have to check off to make sure that we can move on to the next step. And this isn't just for the overall project. This sometimes is for the many segments that we build. So there are, this is a huge undertaking. It's a very big project. It's extensive. There's a ton of planning that goes on on the front end, a ton of approvals that have to happen. But once we start building out and you see construction and you see fiber in the air, it tends to move much faster. So speaking of, on our Henry County update, Fieldale Spencer, which Rob talked about, is approximately 20 miles. Right now, we've completed five miles. That means five miles of fiber strung in the air. It could be, that was yesterday, so it could be a little bit more, Dale. But we're right around five miles. Keep in mind that we also have to go in and anchor and locate, and that takes several weeks. That's the start of the construction phase. This is when you really see the fiber rails coming out. So this is an exciting time. We've also added additional crews, so we pulled some from work that we're doing on the Franklin County side to help work on this portion in Henry County as well. We may have that splice design, I'm not sure, Rob. My last notes say we're waiting on that, but it might be in their hands. Axon Ridgeway, we're approximately 18.4 miles. Construction is targeted for October. And again, we'll work with River Street on that splice design. As you know, splicing is kind of what happens at the end of a segment. They splice in, we splice in, we test, we turn up, and we hand it over. And that is definitely where connections can start taking place. Leatherwood's approximately 16 miles. We've got construction targeted for early December. And keep in mind for these, these are our target dates. We have run into definitely some issues with permitting and different things like that. There have been some delays. Other projects, we've seen delays on stream crossings, railroad crossings, just VDOT in general. Sometimes that happens. This is our target. We do everything that we can. Dale's been very proactive to reach out to folks on our behalf to let them know the importance of this project to the county. And if we can expedite, you know, that's helped in some areas. So we, these are our targets. They don't always come exactly when we want them to. Sometimes there are unforeseen circumstances, but we will ship folks and we will be working on other pieces of the project if that happens. So 2025 construction segments, so things to look forward to. The Figge's Borough Build is approximately 18 miles, and we should begin that in March of 2025. Soapstone is 20 and a half miles, scheduled to begin in April. And Bassett, approximately 22 miles, scheduled to begin in April as well. So as you know, we come out and build these segments, and River Street can connect as we go along. So you don't have to wait until we're completely finished with the fiber build. Citizens can start being hooked up as we're moving along. And River Street's doing a lot of work on the front end, too, making sure that they have their laterals and cabinets and connections and things of that nature. So there's, it's a huge undertaking. There's a lot of work that goes into it. We feel good about where we are now, and you should, you should really see some movement in the county. And Rob, if you wanted to know about festivals and events, shouldn't he join the chamber?
Remember?
Okay, good. All right, just want to put that flag there. Also, just want to say thank you to staff. Dale and his team have been incredible. They ask questions, they keep us on task, and make sure that they know everything that's going on so that they can report to you and your citizens.
Let me just add, this has been frustrating, it's not moved as fast as we would have liked. And you've heard me say it since day one, that this project is to get broadband internet to our residents that has no service now, none at all. So this, when it comes about, will be transformational for our community, that people now that have no access to it will have deep bets with broadband in the county. So that's important that we stay to that goal. And even though we've had delays with the SCC licensure and all the other avenues, I still don't see a path that would be any better than what we're taking now to get broadband to our citizens. So we're just going to stay the course. We have all the funding in place, and we'll keep chipping away at it. So thanks to Amanda and Robert for bringing this information.
And I do have one question. I guess when you complete it, is it going to be an affordable price for average Henry County families?
So when you go to that webpage, you can go down and you can select Internet, and it will have a pricing plan. So we have a $50, it's a 50 by 50 plan, it's like $70. We also have a low-income plan that's going to be brought out. I want to say that that's like $65, that's 100 by 20. That's what the BEAT requirement is for low income. We used to participate in the ACP program, which was a $30 federal supplement, but that went away. We're hoping it will come back. In addition to that, we have, we have 100 by 100 plans and 250 by 250, 500 by 500, and the gig by gig. Our most expensive plan is a gig by gig. It's $130, but that is actually one of the lowest costs out there. Also, our plans are unlimited. There are other companies that have a lower price, but they're not unlimited plans. There is a limited amount, and we don't do that. You buy the plan, you get up to that service as much as possible, and you have unlimited service. So we do have low-income options. We also have more affordable options. What we're seeing, though, is most households are going for the 500 by 500 to a gig plan. And that's just because the price point allows them to typically port over their phone line. A lot of people are already paying, especially in areas where they only have copper, where they don't sell, doesn't really work really well, and they only have copper phone lines. A lot of times, those people are already paying $60 to $70 a month for a copper line that fades out when the rain comes, you know? So yes, it is affordable. Is it free? No, it's not free. But we try to make it as affordable as possible.
One piece to that, I would say the prices are comparable to other competitors in the market that offer. With the fiber, you get upload and download speeds that are equivalent to each other, which none of the other competitors offer now. But the important part is, too, we're taking it to residents' homes that the other providers are not willing to do. I think we're running, if they're at least 2,000 feet from the roadway, and we're going to extend a line, or now, none of the current providers will do that, even if the cable is on the pole at the roadway, if their house is further than
300 feet.
300 feet from the road, they will not extend service to them. So even if it was an option on the roadway, they still have an option at their house where they will with the, with this service. Thank you for that question.
Again, one of the things we really do need is a BEAT support letter from you all to help us go out and find additional funding to meet, provide services to those locations that were previously determined to be served or funded, and they actually were. Unfortunately, until the maps come out, I don't know exactly where those locations are in the county or how many they are, but I do know that there are several hundred of them out there.
It'd probably be beneficial to add, phase one of our VATTI grant is to take the broadband to areas of our county that had absolutely no service. Phase two, which we've already been awarding funding for, was to take it to parts of our county that had service, just not service that met the definition of broadband. And the BEAT funding, if awarded, would extend that to a more broad area and allow more options for our residents to have.
And Mr. Diller, the BEAT funding has an affordability and accessibility program as well? So that's definitely something that your last small provider in the county can work on, make sure citizens can afford that.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple, a comment and then a question. Thank you for coming and giving us the update. It was really great to see you and have the report also. At our last board meeting, I had a constituent come from the Dire Store area, and she specifically came to the, as a matter of the public, she came and spoke at the podium, and then Mr. Wagner directed her to our IT department where information was provided to her specifically for her home. So I also think that's a great way to inform constituents as they, as they ask about it. I really like the slide that you showed where now with myriverstreet.net, so that is, are you saying that that is an opportunity for people that specifically ask me or ask the board, that they can now go there and click on their address and find the information from there?
Yes, ma'am. They can, they can actually go to that, myriverstreet.net, go down to the fiber build, click there, go down then to Henry County, that will bring up the map, and then they can search that map by just putting in their street address, and it will bring it up. If they're in there, like I said, it's a blue dot, and it means that's a location that we're going to be passing the fiber. They can go on and let us know they're interested, and then we'll contact them once fiber is ready. If they're not a blue dot, they need to reach out. If they're not a blue dot, they need to reach out and let county know to be exactly one of those locations that we look at when BEA funding comes out to make sure that they are one of the vulnerable locations.
I've had two since then, two more this past week from the Dire Store, Figgsboro area. Does the Figgsboro area, Amanda, also cover Dire Store? When you say Figgsboro, is that also reaching over there? Because I have two more, two more this week have asked me about it.
I assume that it does go into Dire Store, but I can get you those locations, just so that you know for sure.
I'm pretty sure Mark Alley, our IT director, spoke to at least one of those individuals this weekend. They are in the building area.
Okay, good. And one more question. I know that you're traveling around and you're speaking to, you've got a lot of projects going on in Virginia and lots of counties. How often are you providing those presentations? Or how often are you having informative presentations to other counties? And Mr. Wagner and Mrs. Cox, how, how often do you feel like that would be a reasonable schedule for us to receive those updates as well?
We meet monthly with the counties and all the partners in the Planning Commission to make sure everything is on track. There, you know, Ms. Cobbler, there are some folks that ask us to give an update once a year. There are some that we might come every other month. It is your pleasure, and we will do everything that we can to be here and give you a report on the latest and greatest.
Okay.
We typically try to come in quarterly, but we come out and give you an update. Again, just like building a house, you know, the foundation goes in, and then it looks like nothing really happens for a while, and then the walls go up and nothing, and then the roof goes on. So there's a lot of, lot of moving parts, but you don't see a lot of movement sometimes. If I come in every month, give you an update, it might be, oh, we went from this many miles to this many miles versus if you come in quarterly, you'll see some changes and stuff. And again, at the same time, we have a monthly update call with all the counties and the Planning Commission, River Street, and the AEP. So we're giving out updates as well. If there's anything significant that's going to happen, it will be covered on that call. And if we need to come out and address it, we can do a one-off meeting. Particularly, I would recommend a quarterly meeting.
Okay, thank you.
And I just want to reiterate what Dale was saying. This is really forward-thinking. You guys are providing something to your citizens that you're not going to have to look at this 10 years down the road, 20 years down the road, and see if the technology has changed. You're arming them for this future-proof solution. We live here, we work here, we're serving our customers just like you're serving your citizens. So we're really happy to be a part of this, this project. So thank you very much.
Any other questions? Thank you all. That takes us to agenda item number nine, the natural matters. We will begin with 9A, an additional appropriation referencing fire programs aid to localities funds for the public safety. Mr. Wagner.
Public Safety Director Matt Tatum is asking the board to appropriate $26,500 received from the fiscal year 2024 Virginia Fire Program's Aid to Localities Fund. The funds will go toward the future purchase of a fire truck for the Collinsville Volunteer Fire Department. The Emergency Services Advisor Council concurs with using the fiscal year 2024 funds for this purpose. And these are funds that we receive from the state as a percentage of homeowners insurance funds that these funds are derived from.
Okay, thank you. In regard to this additional appropriation, Mr. Bryant, I believe the service area is primarily your district, although they do service others outside of your district.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion that we approve the additional appropriations of $226,500 received from Virginia Fire Program Aid to Local Funds.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I may add
Yes, sir.
The Collinsville Fire Department is not at a point to order that truck at this point in time.
Yes.
This is pretty much an accounting procedure for us to allocate those 2024 funds so they're rolled to 2025.
Thank you for bringing that out. I think Mr. Tatum had provided us some of that same information in our background material, but I do appreciate you pointing that out in case the community is looking. When's it going to show up?
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? There's six, zero, Jennifer. 9B, an additional appropriation referencing real estate assessment for the Commissioner of Revenue's office. Mr. Wagner.
Commissioner of Revenue Tiffany Hairston is asking the board to appropriate $32,500 from the board's contingency fund to contract with Josh Myers Valuation Services to assist her office with the real estate assessments. Commissioner Hairston has also requested the board to delay the reassessment by one year, moving the effective date to January 1, 2026. The extra time will allow her office adequate time to conduct a fair and equitable reassessment. And Mrs. Hairston also wanted to send her apologies and regrets for not being able to attend the meeting today, as she is participating in professional involvement for her position. You may recall, we've had some discussion about this request at past meetings, and Mr. Wilder had provided some additional information, so either Mr. Wilder himself can answer any questions.
Okay, the morgue's had an opportunity to review this request. What action would you like to take in regard to this additional appropriation?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the appropriation of $32,500 from the board's contingency fund to contract with Josh Myers Valuation Services for assistance with the real estate assessment and to grant the Commissioner of Revenue's request to delay the reassessment by one year, moving the effective date to January 1, 2026.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? There's six, zero, Jennifer. 9C, an additional appropriation referencing fresh fruit and vegetable program for the school board. Mr. Wagner.
School Board is asking for an approval of an additional appropriation of $244,350 to the school's nutrition budget for the fresh fruit and vegetable program for the elementary schools. The funds are provided by the Virginia Department of Education from the United States Department of Ed- Department of Ethical Control Allocation. And Dr. Annie Blake Lewis is here. Should you have any questions?
In regard to this additional appropriation, what is the desire of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the additional appropriation of $244,350 to the public schools nutrition budget for the fresh fruit and vegetable program.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? There's six, zero, Jennifer. 9D, lump sum funding request for the school board. Mr. Wagner.
The school board is requesting that the board supervisors continue changing how it allocates public education funds, shifting from the categorical funding model to a lump sum funding model. School funding is currently budgeted and appropriated by category, and the board supervisors must approve transfers between categories. If this request is granted, school funding will still be budgeted by category, but appropriated in one lump sum, allowing the school board to move funds between categories without the consent of the board supervisor.
Okay, with that, is there any action that the board would like to take in regard to this? I'd like for Dr. Blake Lewis, if she would be willing to elaborate on the rationale and for the request.
Thank you, Mr. Dillard, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This has been a discussion point going back a few months now. The request of the school board is for lump sum funding as opposed to the categorical funding to give the school system greater latitude in how monies can be moved between categories. We know that the current system provides for us to bring every transaction to you for approval, and it does slow down the timeline and the process for us to be able to transact business in a lot of occasions. You would still be able to see these transactions as you have access to Munis. So that is oversight that is still there. It would simply remove the step of that formality of having to bring it to the supervisors each and every time we may need to shift funds from one category to another.
And I do have a couple other questions, because I know we've talked about this multiple times, and it would be great to, you know, get some, this conversation on it. But I guess one question would be, and either Mr. Wagner or Dr. Blake Lewis, what are the positives of making a change from categorical to lump sum? Then what would be the negatives? And then is there any glaring reason as to why we wouldn't honor this request from the school system?
I would say positives from this would be greater efficiency operating with the school system. Like I mentioned earlier, just having that latitude to shift funds when that need arises. In my recollection of my year and some months here, the board has never denied a request for a categorical budget shift. And again, you can see everything within Munis. It's not like we would be concealing anything from you. There is still that continued oversight. In terms of a negative, I guess it would just be the supervisors, forgive me for being blunt, simply wanted to keep tabs on us and see it, so.
Mr. Wagner, is anything you'd like to elaborate? Is anything any different from what Dr. Blake Lewis said in reference to the positives, negatives, or if there's a glaring reason not to make that change?
You may recall, when this discussion came up a couple months ago, I provided a hard copy of the pros and cons of doing the process. It's really just a policy decision for you all to decide, you know, how much control you want to have over how the tax dollars of the citizens are spent. And you're the ones that sets the tax rate. The school system gets all of their funding from someone else. They don't generate any revenue on their own. So it's up, so it's up to you all to decide which funds you give them and how to use it. So it's really dependent upon if this board sees the need for that extra step to provide more transparency or more acknowledgement of how those funds are spent, or if you're willing to, and trust them with that responsibility. It's really a public policy decision. There, I mean, you dig real down deep into it, you know, administratively on the county side, it would be easier for us to administer, administer on the county side, but it's not a very difficult process now to facilitate the transfer. So I would say that would be just a minor pro. I mean, it's not a major deal. The converse of that is I wouldn't want the sheriff to come in next and ask for lump sum funding, and, you know, we afford one department or division, it's like the division of schools, you know, lump sum funding without any jurisdictional oversight from you all, legislative oversight from you all, but, you know, we require a sheriff to come to you just to move money from pound control to corrections or vice versa. And the county administrator doesn't have that authority. I can't move funds between cost centers without coming to you. It's really a public policy, your preference. I don't have any strong opinion either.
Would you say the difference with the sheriffs department would be that the school board has a board
Yes.
that oversees their funding? If you allow the sheriff to do that, you know, he's one individual and doesn't have a board that oversees his funding. So is that a fair comparison there, that, you know, the sheriff individually versus the school board?
Your assessment is correct. It's not the same by board, but they're all, he's an elected official.
Correct.
Mr. Dillard, I appreciate you drawing that comparison, because my board would still have to approve any movement of funding that we would want to make, which is, in my opinion, comparable to the decision of this board before me in terms of, you know, having that final say. My board is elected just as you all are elected. It's a very comparable situation.
I do, I'll make a, I'll have some discussion with you, Mr. Dillard. Because I know that Dr. Blake Lewis, you and I, I met with you and Dr. Boone after I was elected. Had I felt like a wonderful meeting, and as you know, and I've made it abundantly clear that I, as an advocate for public education, having been an educator myself, and I said publicly, I know that I have, my students are teaching in Henry County and they're principals, and I have so many educators in my family. So I know that I'm not the only one on the board who advocates for public education. I have taken this decision, I have taken this topic, Mr. Dillard, pretty seriously, and I've just pondered it, and I asked the sheriff how he felt about it, and I haven't asked other managers, and he said it was okay. I didn't know he wasn't going to be here, but he said, sure, you can tell him we had the conversation, that he also felt that if we did lump funding, lump sum funding for one, I would say, department or division, that everybody should have an opportunity to have that discussion with understanding that, that the school, you do have a school board that, to whom you report. The other thing that I did, I know I've told, told you, and I've told other folks, that I have focus groups all over the Reed Creek district, and I do go to them with questions and ask their opinions, and out of everyone I ask in the community, and I'll just say specifically Reed Creek, and I know you live in Reed Creek, and we have a school board member that does, and just appreciate the, the great work that's happening in Henry County schools. I ask a lot of different people from a lot of different sectors of our community, and specifically in Reed Creek. And out of everyone I ask, I only found one person that was supportive of lump sum funding for, for any department or any category. So I would say that as, as a Reed Creek supervisor, on behalf of Reed Creek, currently, I've, I strongly feel that publicly, it's not a positive thing for the board of supervisors, and it's not a positive thing from, for the school divisions, feeling like that we do approve everything for which you, for which you ask and gladly, gladly do that. I'm thrilled that Governor Yonkin gave Henry County so much more money for the schools. And anything else I feel like that we can do for you, I would just like to say that, that I am, and I feel like the board is, is a strong advocate of Henry County schools, you and Henry County schools and your staff and your board. But again, on behalf of the questions that I ask the community, I did not find a lot of support for that. They like having, they like the process that we have now. So I just wanted to extend that to Mr. Dillard, because I know he's been a big voice for you all, and I just, just wanted to have the conversation with you, because I know I haven't been able to do that just individually. So thanks, thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you.
And if no other comments, I will make a motion that we switch from the categorical to lump sum funding, just to officially go on record. Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second? We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Seeing no indication that there is, it's not going to be a second. The motion dies for lack of a second. That takes us to agenda item number 10, informational items. Begin with comments from the board, beginning with Dr. Cobbler.
The only other thing I have is that, again, let's see Sheriff Davis here, but he has some representatives. He, we, in the Figgsboro area, we are starting or reinstating the Neighborhood Watch program. It's been something that we've met with the Ruittens a couple of times, and they have approved that. So Figgsboro and that area will be moving forward with the Neighborhood Watch program. Again, pretty excited about that.
All right, great. Thank you. Mr. Pruitt?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Dillard? Yes, sir. Just, you know, as we're all watching the election, it's amazing, the conversations that they're having are more about people over politics. And I think that I would like to see us shift, you know, in that direction, and this is, you know, my thoughts with our agenda. But you're hearing a lot of conversation about the crime and the crime rate, you know, the economy, poverty, you know, and other things that are more people-centered and less political-centered. And, you know, and I would love to see us moving in that direction where we're focusing on the people of Henry County. And I know that some of the things that we do are related to that, but I think when, you know, it's specifically on the agenda, we're having those conversations, when we have advisory groups, the funding that we, you know, have in our budget, you know, it shows whether it's people over politics and more input from the community, you know, Dr. Cobbler, you know, mentioned she went out and spoke to community members, you know, but getting that input. And I think that, you know, for me, that's what I would love to see us moving in that direction, as opposed to feeling like it's just a standard, someone got, received a grant, we vote, we approve it, or items come into us, but where we're, you know, going out into the community, looking at the fact that we have a crime problem, a housing problem, you know, we have jobs, industries that are leaving, and we're putting things on that agenda to address, to talk about those things, to create that discussion, so that five, 10 years down the road, those the road, those things don't creep up on us and we're back into a really, really bad place. So that's, and I see the national election, people are going to make decisions based off of some of the things I mentioned, but I think we have as much of an impact locally as what, you know, the folk in Washington DC would have on Henry County. So let us have the same conversations that they're having within our local government.
Well, thank you. Ms. Buchanan?
I just have a couple of things. This is the last meeting before my Horse Pasture District Community Meeting and I do want to mention that again. It's coming up on Tuesday, October the 8th, from 6 until 7:30 PM at the Horse Pasture Ruettan Building and County Administrator Dale Wagner will be there as well as the Sheriff, Wayne Davis, and also Mr. Kaiser with VDOT. And what we just try to do is bring a local government to the community, try to update them as well as attempt to answer any questions that they might have or work out any problems that are presented. Also, I want to let you know about, again, the 29th Annual Coat Drive for Kids. It's underway. We partner with the Henry County Schools as well as the Salvation Army and encourage anyone that is willing to buy a brand new coat or to drop that off, they can drop it off at Hollywood Cinema or One Hour Martinizing on Reeves Road, or they can drop it off at One Hour Martinizing to have it cleaned. And I work with Mr. Dillard here and we try to provide the children that need one, a new coat. And I think for the last couple of years, it has been brand new coats. But we do work with the Salvation Army also, so we try to provide coats for people there too. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Bryant?
Yes, sir. I'd like to say a little bit, you know, like Mr. Dillard said, we do have an election coming up this year, presidential election, and it's going to be a, it's going to be a pretty, probably tough election going on this year. My suggestion would be that people would make all considerations on who they're going to vote for. Regardless who you vote for, you just need to do an informed investigation on who you're going to vote for to see what is the better party, not even taking the party sip out of it, who's going to be the best one for the job. You know, our country depends on good leadership and like Mr. Dillard said, our local leadership here, we're trying to do what we can for our county here in Henry County. We're trying to be the best that we can do here. Our federal government's the same way as we put them in office. So we do need to make certain that we do pick the right person regardless of who you pick. Get out and vote. That's the main thing. Get out and vote. I don't care who you vote for, but our forefathers has put this in front of you now to give you the opportunity to go out and vote, which so many countries don't have right now. You have the opportunity to go out and make that vote, so do so.
All right, thank you. I don't have anything additional, so.
Yeah, a couple of items, if you would, don't want to interrupt on it. I would like for Roger Adams to come up in front voluntarily. Roger, in the Parks and Rec Team was recently presenting an award from the Virginia Recreation and Parks Society in recognition of the Henry County Recreation Center in Collinsville as the Best New Renovation Award. It was presented to Parks and Rec Team, which is, you know, it's really, it was presented to Parks and Rec Team, but it's, it's an award for our communities or award for you all because the finances, the taxpayers' money made it possible to operate and build that facility. So I want to congratulate Roger and his team for the outstanding work they have done there and also give him a chance to tell us about the fair, the ribbon cutting tomorrow. So Roger, congratulations on the award.
So the Henry County Recreation Center has just been a tremendous, it's hard to overstate the importance and the value the community center has been for our folks, especially for our seniors, for our 50-plus group, as I like to call it. So when you guys get to be 50, y'all can participate in some of the programs. But the people that come down there to the rec center, we have programs every day for folks over 50 and just to see them, the smiles that it brings and the activities they were participating in. A lot of folks have no one at home and they live by themselves, don't have any family and they come down there and be able to hang out and socially interact and participate in low-cost programs. It's just, it's amazing to see that down there. We have other things for kids. We have summer camps there. We have a girls volleyball league from this Henry County Fair pageant. So there's a lot of folks, but it's been a tremendous asset for our community and for our residents. So the 4th annual Henry County Fair starts tomorrow at 5:00 PM. We're having a ribbon cutting between 4:45 and 5:00, so if you all would like to be there. It will be at the main gates to the fairgrounds and we have a tremendous amount of energy built this year towards the fair, a tremendous amount of social media exposure, TV exposure. We've been able to be on WDBJ 7, WSLS, the local channel, Star News, BTW, Louise Romero's Show, B99, Star Country, K-Love, Spirit FM. So there's a lot of energy out there and in the fair world, we're still a baby, being our fourth year and we're competing against fairs that have been around 60, 70, 80 years. So we're hoping for a good fair. Obviously, we're not extremely excited about the weather forecast, but we're hoping for any of that changes and we have a good turnout. Wednesday night, we have Key West Tribute Buffett Tribute Band, which the Weather Corporation, they will have a huge crowd. Wednesday night is B99 night. We have the grandsons of the Statler Brothers, Jack and Davis Reed. And Friday is Spirit FM night. We have Jordan Feliz. So hoping to come out with that. We have two awesome ground shows every day. The Ball Pio, the amazing dog show from America's Got Talent and the brand new Space Adventure Thrill Show. Of course, we have all of the fun rides, delicious fair food and fun prize games. Saturday night, we have fireworks and of course, the L H Star Credit Union Race is in the Speedway. So it's really a great four-day weekend to promote our community, to come to March of Henry County, come to the fair, come to the concerts and shows and go to the race at the Speedway Thursday night, excuse me, Saturday night. So I see this continuing to grow in years to future and just getting bigger and better. Last year, we won numerous awards at the State Fair Conference to celebrate our fair. So we're looking forward to a good, good event and hopefully the weather will somewhat cooperate. Thank you, Roger. That's all I have. Can I say?
Roger, you probably said, and I missed it, what are your actual operating hours of the fair? When can the public show up?
Sure.
When can they expect that the fair would be shut down at night?
So Wednesday and Thursday, it's 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Friday is 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM and Saturday is noon until 11:00 PM.
Noon until 11:00, okay.
And if folks want to buy discounted ride tickets, you can go to coalrides.com before the fair opens on Wednesday and you get discounted unlimited ride risk bands.
All right, great.
One quick thing too, you know, we talked about the community center down in Collinsville and after all this, greatest community center in Henry County. Just thought I'd throw that in there. But, you know, pickleball, everybody's familiar with pickleball, it's picking up. And I've had some requests to see about maybe possibly putting a couple of pickleball courts on the outside where those swimming pools used to be at. Is that a possibility?
So we just got two of the courts lined at J C Park.
Right.
For pickleball and the company that did that said that they could build eight pickleball courts back there for a turnkey job for about $250,000.
Now that's where we're at now?
Behind the rec center.
There you go.
It wouldn't be where their old pool is, it would be down on the side ground.
Right.
But they could build eight of those for $250,000.
I'm telling you, that pickleball's picked up. Go for it.
All right, and you?
That's all I have, thank you.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed meeting as allowed by the Code of Virginia.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we go into a closed session under 2.23711A1 for discussion of personnel matters and consideration of appointees to the Henry County Martinsville Social Services Board and the Southern Area Agency on Aging Board. 2.23711A7 for discussion of pending legal matters. 2.23711A3 for discussion of the acquisition disposal of real estate and 2.23711A5 for discussion of as yet unannounced industries.
Second. All right, we have a motion, second. All in favor? It is 6-0. Jennifer, I see you all upstairs and typing. Came out of closed meeting on a motion by Mr. Bryant and second by Mr. Dillard. Mr. Powell, will you pull the board, please?
There's more members, best of your knowledge, only public business matters, awfully exempted from open duty requirements under Code of Virginia Section 2-3711 were not discussed. Or considered in closed meeting, how do you vote? Mr. Adams?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Dillard?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Cobbler?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
And may be noted that Ms. Buchanan did not attend closed session and will not be available for the evening session. Mr. Pruitt, I believe that you have a countywide appointment for the board's consideration.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion to reappoint Brenda Metz on the Southern Area Agency on Aging Board with a term effective November 1st, 2024 for three years.
Second. We have a motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is 5 with one absent, Jennifer. And Mr. Bryant, I believe that there may need to be an acceptance of a deed. If you would formalize that in a motion, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the deed to convey approximately five acres of land on Kaufman Drive in Collinsville from Henry County Public Schools to the County of Henry.
Second. We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is 5 with one absent. Mr. Wagner, any other items that we need to consider?
Yeah, we'd like to bring one item to your attention. We are now accepting nominations for the annual Veterans Outstanding Veteran of the Year Award. We'll accept those nominations until October 20th and that award is presented on November 11 at the annual community veterans day.
Okay, all right, great.
Thank you.
Board members, before we have a very, very brief adjournment of, I mean, not adjournment, but coming out of closed meeting, a recess, let's just call it that. Are there any items that we need to consider? If not, we will stand in recess and promptly start our evening session in four minutes. I'll call the evening session of the September 24th, 2024, meeting of the Henry County Board of Supervisors to order. Like to welcome all of our visitors. I'll remind you, if you want to address the board in any of our regular meetings, you must sign up seven days in advance of any of our regular meetings to be put on the agenda. The county administrator is the contact person for the board. However, the public may address the board under the agenda item, matters presented by the public that we take up tonight as agenda item number 15. Again, welcome, everyone. I know it's messy outside, a lot of storms going on, but thank you for being here. Our first item of consideration is agenda item number 12, presentation of the Community Connected Citizen Award. Mr. Wagner, if you'll give us a little bit of background on this and then Mr. Dillard is going to provide us some additional information in regard to this.
The Community Connected Citizen Award, often known as the CCC Award, recognizes Henry County residents who selflessly dedicate their time and energy to making our community a better place. The CCC Award is designed to recognize the everyday contributions of our citizens performing acts of public service that often culminate to have a tremendous impact. These acts deserve to be commended and more importantly, to be recognized. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Dillard for some additional information on tonight's honor.
Yes, sir, and I appreciate it, Mr. Wagner. And, you know, as I was thinking about different folk who deserve this award, you know, I had many, many different names that came to mind, but then I thought about, you know, three young men that are doing some really, really good things out in the community and oftentimes the type of activities and entertainment and support they're bringing to the community gets overlooked because people just see it as like a car show. But, you know, these guys took their different talents and I think back to Mr. Niblet, years ago, we spoke, we talked, and he just wanted to do something for Henry County and just do something to bring some positivity. Mr. Alexier Hairston was out, you know, painting faces and doing different things and, you know, working with cars and, you know, Mr. Greg Hairston had the event out in the, you know, the Nob area, as we would call it. And those guys came together and put their talents and their love of cars together. And it's not just a car show when these guys put something together, but they're doing it for a good cause. You know, they're doing it to bring people together. You know, we live in a small community and we don't always have the opportunities of some of the larger cities, but they started doing like a Friday Night Lights and just Friday nights, people could go out and, you know, car enthusiasts would come out and they've turned that from just bringing your cars out to, hey, how can we use this event to raise money? How can we use this event to bring awareness to causes? And I think those things are important and I'm going to give each one of those guys a deck of cards tonight because I, you know, one, you know, I'm very symbolic and I love words, but, and your picture's on the cards, but, you know, take the hand that you dealt. You know, these guys love vehicles, they love working with people, they love their community. They took that hand and they have now turned it into the heads of state enterprise. I mean, they're doing some really, really good things, you know, all throughout Henry County. I think even down in Danville, they're doing some stuff, you know, in regards to the races. They've connected with, you know, Mr. Barry Nelson, different folk. And then the other thing is, is that, you know, when you're playing certain games of cards, the better your team is, the better you are. And I can tell you, these guys are truly a great team. If you haven't been to one of their events, you know, please do so, check out their Facebook page. And I know they're going to talk some about some upcoming events, but really felt that they were deserving and worthy of this, you know, Community Connect Award because they do some great things in Martinsville, Henry County. And I'd love for Mr. Alexier Hairston, Mr. Taman Niblet and Mr. Greg Hairston to come on up to the podium. And I know they said Alexier was a spokesperson and he's going to, you know, just give us a little bit about your organization, some of the things that you all do, and then we'll proceed from there.
Well, thank you, Mr. Dillard, for that. And that's a great introduction for us. We're staying here very humble because once you get recognized for tasks and things that you're not seeking recognition for, it's very rewarding towards ourselves because this is our, really, six years of doing the fence here in the county, which all of us have grown up in. I'm from Bassett, Virginia, Taman, everyone's Henry County. I want to say, everybody's from Henry County. This is our town, this is our city, this is our county. And six years ago, just a little, quick little overview, six years ago, we decided, as Gary was saying, put our talents together because all of us have loved vehicles. Some of us come from racing backgrounds, some just always been in the family. We're all going to do something to bring people together and we noticed that cars is one avenue or one thing to bring people together. And once you see the individuals out there, you find that you're not that far apart from one another when you have a common interest. And the car is the common interest in our group. And with that, we were able to espouse upon there and start doing a lot of community service. We've done numerous food drives. When it started off, really, some of our friends were at Autozone. Our friends at Autozone in Collinsville were outside Dutchland, some of our early events. And then went from, that's in the area, Chester Nob area where the community would come out and we would come out and just had to donate candy goods. And everybody would bring a candy good. And then from there, we did, one day we stood out in the rain. Taman and I myself and Greg was outside in the rain doing a toy drive. A lot of people parked though, we were trying to just maybe make sales or something, but we were trying to actually give toys away. It was at the OAP Park and our family dog, which would be the new site for the new YMCA if I'm not mistaken. And then we went to Walmart. Then after that, we started gaining interest from local entities, a lot of our friends and positions, and we started to grow upon that. And with our friends, with, now we're associated with the Boys and Girls Club, Joey Arrington with Speedway Service Center. I go on and on, a good friend, Mr. Gary Dillard, I go on and on with names, but we started gaining relationships. And with new college upcoming events, we have an upcoming, our Trunk and Treat. I say our first Trunk and Treat was at the OAP Park and Life with our friends and with our CrossFit 276, now their Performance 276. And again, with the Trunk and Treat, individuals bring out their hot rods, they dress them up and we see all the kids go around and see the cars and get the candy. We have a good time. And then from there, we started doing our Summer Fest. I say our Summer Fest is our biggest, our largest event, one of our largest events, which be held at the Sports Complex. This year will be October the 26th. And with that, Summer Fest, it brings a lot of people together that have small businesses. Because we have a lot of vendors come out, set up for food or if you're selling jewelry or if you're selling ICs, if you're selling whatever your side business. or if you're selling ICs, if you're selling whatever your side business is. This year, we have a cigar, we have a cigar lounge coming from out of Greensboro. So we reach out to a lot of different individuals and bring their business to our area. And it helps out our area economically, helps our area of being exposed, and we have fun with it. We promote local talent. Our state local talent is Family Orient, all our business is Family Orient. I'm getting a little breath because it's choking me thinking about everything, when you talk about everything you do, sometimes you forget. And our toy drive, which is huge, will be this year with the Speedway Service Center. We partner with Boys and Girls Club and with a lot of other businesses where we'll put together donation boxes at the businesses. And all those businesses, they have people bringing the toys. Sheriff Davis, I can't say enough about Sheriff Davis. When he found out what we do, or what we have been doing, he and his staff of deputies, they come out with the red carpet for us. We start our drive up in Stanley Town, where the old Winn-Dixon used to be, if you're familiar with that area of Stanley Town. And we come all through two twenty business, and then Martinsville City picked us up on Reeves Road, and we finish off at the Speedway Service Center. But Sheriff Davis, and even the city of Martinsville, they really come out and support us by blocking the streets, giving us safety escort from point A all the way to point B. And when, once we get to the Speedway Service Center, which is where the old Sears building is at, you see all the kids lined up and waiting for those cars coming. Really waiting for the toys. But when they see all those hot rods coming in, and the guys and females, I say I mean females as well, because they driving cars as well, and they come out with the toys and the cars in their hands, and just see all the kids' faces light up, and each year it grows more and more. This is our fourth year doing this toy drive, and this year will be, it's always Saturday before Christmas. So this year is December the twenty first. And it's just, it just makes it all worth it. And we are so appreciative, I know I probably forget something, but we're so appreciative of this award that you all bestowed upon us, and we ask for you all to just look at our page as a state entertainment group, help support us more because we want to keep growing and growing. Hopefully next year and year after that, we keep bringing more entertainment to the community, making more things exposed to Martinville, Henry County, because this is our county, this is our area. And the more that we do together, the more we can grow, like I said, the deck of cards. We can keep on going through the deck of cards. With you all's help, everybody's here today, outreach to more individuals, just help us and we continue to do great things. If I say that enough? Am I saying that? Other than that, we thank you.
And I want to say that if anybody has a connection with Mr. Clay Campbell, these guys have a dream of getting out to the Martinsville Speedway and doing an event. So if you can put a little word in Clay Campbell's ear to make that happen, that would be awesome for these guys.
We'd love to work along with him as well. That's right. Thank you.
Hang on, guys. I think Mr. Dillard has a presentation.
Anybody else coming down?
Yeah. Board members, if you would like to jump in.
One thing I did want to say is, I don't know if y'all know it, Greg here, he's a different color than I am, but we're brothers. His daddy is my, I'm his oldest brother. His daddy is my father. He adopted me back in nineteen eighty-one or two in the military. Can't think of a better family.
Thank you all. I thought people, if you don't pitch your holiday calls, if you have some.
Thank you. 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 Thank you.[1012.13]
Therefore, as an administrative matter, staff is requested to consider a resolution asking the Virginia Department of Transportation to accept the new road into the secondary road system and abandon the old portion. And you have a resolution for your consideration in effect.
As Mr. Wagner said, you have opportunity to review this as part of your board packet. In regard to this resolution, what is the desire of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the resolution requesting VDOT accept the new segment of Airport Road, SR six nine eight, to the secondary road system and abandon the old portion.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's five with one absent. Lisa, we're going to get you to cover some general highway matters at this point in time, and then in a moment, in regards to the airport, we're going to ask the airport manager to come up and give us a little brief update on some things going on around there. So.
All right. Right now, we're mowing as we can. Our main focus is on getting patching done in preparation for next year's pavement schedule, and we've got two roads left to pave this year. Both are fifty-seven. One section is down in Kohler. That'll take about two to three weeks to finish. And then we've got fifty-seven from Stones Dairy Road down to Trent Hill, and that'll do us for the year. And that's all I had.
All right. Thank you for those updates, specifically where there's going to be some interruption in traffic for a few days. So you may want to reroute some things specifically on the Kohler Road if you pass through there, since it is somewhat narrow and paving project going on. So just, board members, do you have any items from issues? All right. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Dale, if you'll lead into an introduction of our airport manager?
Yeah, Mr. Jason Davis is the director of Blue Ridge Regional Airport, and he's been instrumental in leading the efforts for the several exciting projects at the airport. And we consider Blue Ridge Regional Airport as one of our gateways to our community. It's used quite frequently by many businesses and industries, but even just hobbyists who like to come there and eat lunch and buy fuel and different things. So I will ask Mr. Davis to come to the podium and introduce his guests with him, and also tell us about all the exciting things going on up here.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Paul Brown, one of our consultants with WK Dixon is with us, so I'll let Mr. Brown speak about the boring part, which is the road, and then I'll talk about the runway in just a couple minutes. So, Mr. Brown?
Hey, I'm Paul Brown with WK Dixon. I spent five years at VDOT, now I'm in the private sector. For the runway extension, there was a need to relocate the road. I'm appreciative of the action that y'all just took to accept the right-of-way dedication and the abandonment. Just to give you some information on the road, construction started in fall of twenty-three. It was completed roughly in May of twenty-four, roughly two hundred and twenty-two days. Interesting enough, Henry County allowed us to pursue funding from the Commonwealth Transportation Board. We were able to access funds that had not been accessed in twelve years, so we're appreciative of that. Henry County allowed us to act on their behalf for oversight of the construction. This was considered a locally administered project. It was a successful project as we were ahead of schedule and under budget, and that should look good for Henry County relative to your locally administered projects. That's one more green dot for construction of locally administered projects. As you were aware, we were able to reduce six hundredths of a mile from future maintenance, and the road result was a wider road with softer curves and drains better. And it should maintain, it should stay in place for a long time with very minimal maintenance.
Thank you.
Once again, I just want to say thank you so much for your support. It's so refreshing to have this relationship. I can honestly say there are many airport managers in the Commonwealth that do not have this relationship with their board supervisors or their city councils. So we are so fortunate to have it. It makes my job so much easier, and I'm just happy to report, you know, a small timeline of where we started and where we're at. I'm shooting off the hip here a little bit, but in two thousand and nineteen, we rehabbed the runway for five point seven million dollars, and that was to rehab the existing pavement and then adjust the grades for the anticipated extension. We immediately went into phase one of the first part of the road relocation and a ramp expansion, and that was an eight million dollar effort. Going into where we just finished, the first part of the road, phase one, about a six million dollar effort. Then, of course, the cherry on top, the runway extension with this forthcoming is going to be about fourteen million. So we are doing our part for the economy as much as we possibly can. We continue to turn that wheel. We anticipate the runway being done the first part of July of two thousand and twenty-five. When we first started this conversation with some of you, Mr. Adams, I know you're privy to this, we were talking about the runway being completed in two thousand and thirty-two. With the help of you all, some of our local partners, Harvest Foundation, we were able to cut this timeline in half. Could not have done it without the help of Henry County. So this is going to be game-changing for this community, the six thousand foot runway, one of only three six thousand foot general aviation airports in the Commonwealth of the sixty-five airport system we will have right here in our backyard. When I get done with that, what am I going to do next? Am I going to retire? No, we're going to go into and design and build a brand-new terminal building to polish it off. So I'm happy to report that is in design phase right now. We're waiting on a little environmental finding, and that should be forthcoming here in the next ninety days, and then we will start the process of building the new terminal. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions? I will. I forgot to tell you this, I call him a brand-new customer that happened to be in Ridgefield, North Carolina. Never had met the person. After describing where I was from, she said to me, "My husband and I, we fly up to a little airport up in Henry County, and we have lunch at Simply Suzanne's." And so again, sometimes we think about aircraft being on race weekend or just, again, the hobbyists, but I think that they're pretty frequent visitors there, and that was somewhat a little more than a icebreaker. But not only the restaurant business there, we have two air transport.
Two medical operators.
Medical transport operating out there. And the commerce of specific aircraft being able to land there and jets that, in adjoining county, that are making their way up to Premlin and other activities, it's quite a draw.
It is, and, you know, with that, I'm glad you mentioned our friends to the west. The airport serves Patrick County. We were created to serve the city of Martinsville and Henry and Patrick County. Premlin is our biggest customer. That's no big surprise, and the lion's share of the catalyst for the growth. However, if you look at companies in Henry County that use the airport from a corporate position, be shocked. Monogram is our biggest user of the airport that resides in Henry County. They serve companies all over the United States. And how do they get their executives to Martinsville? It's not on American. It's in our backyard through Blue Ridge Airport on their corporate airplanes. We forget about organ harvest teams that come in, life-saving things that happen from midnight to six. Two medevac helicopters, as you mentioned, were the only airport in the Commonwealth that has two. That includes Manassas. Manassas is the biggest general aviation airport in the Commonwealth, and they have one. So we're very fortunate to continue this growth, and just, we have great things to come. And you will see, you will see when we are done, the investment will certainly work worth the time.
You didn't mention the hangars.
Yes, yes. Thank you, Mr. Wagner. We're building two new corporate hangars, two eighty-by-eighties. One is already rented from a gentleman from Lynchburg, a car dealer from Lynchburg. So we're happy to take his airplane from that county and put it on our tax. So I'll be recording that one on January first. But, yeah, we kicked off those in December and hope to have them done by the end of October.
Terrific.
I just want to concur also, just, I feel like that our airport is one of the gems that we have, just doing something very informal called megaphone moments, but also that airport is one of our gems, specifically in this region and in Henry County. So try to get up there, have lunch, and just kind of watch the planes come in and out. And I will also say, the other thing that I enjoy, Mr. Davis, is on your Facebook post, when those airplanes come in, and you let us see the different types of jets and the different type of aircraft that's coming in, I enjoy seeing that. I mean, I am fascinated by the whole aviation thing, but in addition to that, when you're doing that, you're showing us who's coming in and out of the airport. I think that's very cool.
Thank you, Ms. Colwell. I appreciate that. That's kind of turned into a big trend. When I don't do it for a week, people will text me, "Jason, are you okay? What's going on up there? Let us know." But thank you very much for that.
It's fun to see the aircraft coming in and out.
Thank you for that update.
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize for my inattention when you were speaking, but a portion of our county is in a tornado warning. We are not in a tornado warning here, so we can continue the meeting, but I bring that to your attention, that's what JR and I was dealing with over here, to make sure that was.
That portion doesn't include the airport, does it?
Uh, it does, I think. The six forty-five, and the whole county is under a thunderstorm warning.
Okay. A lot of, and my phone has gone off a couple of times in thunderstorm warnings and that type of thing. That takes us to Agenda Item fifteen, Matters Presented by the Public. Is there anyone here desiring to address the board under Matters Presented by the Public? Seeing and hearing no indication as such, takes us to Agenda Item number sixteen. If the board desires to adjourn, I will accept a motion. So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor? It's five zero over with one absent, Jennifer. Everyone have a good evening. Be safe out there.